Good morning. We now call the, and welcome. Welcome to this morning meeting for the School Board of St. Lucie County. It is our regular meeting, July 10th, 2018, and we will, at this time, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Directly after, we will remain standing for the Kids at Hope Treasure Hunters pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. We're going to go right into our CTA report. Good morning, and welcome.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the School Board, Superintendent Gent. This morning, I want to speak about some things we've accomplished together over the years. The Union District have had opportunities to work together on issues of importance to our students, our school district, and our community. The work we have done together on the Children's Services Council renewal and the half penny sales tax are perfect examples. So, I want to speak this morning about the recent work of the Constitutional Revision Committee, and specifically Amendment Eight, that will appear on the ballot in November, which presents another such opportunity. Amendment Eight has three bad ideas bundled together in one constitutional amendment. Why? Because the amendment includes language that would allow a politically-appointed, unaccountable board in Tallahassee, not our local school board, to decide when and where new charter schools will open. Of course, if that were to be presented by itself on the ballot, there's little doubt that voters would vote it down. So, the idea here is to trick voters into giving away local control of their public schools in return for mandated civics education and term limits for school board members. Almost all of us agree that we really want civics taught in school, but you don't need a constitutional amendment to accomplish that. In fact, we already teach civics, and we have a state mandatory test to prove it. We already have term limits for school board members, democratic election, and we have another one in 48 days. What voters probably don't want is the state to begin setting up privately-controlled schools in your neighborhood, rating our local school budget to do it, and having no one accountable for the expenditure, the funds, or the performance of the school. The Florida Legislature has already handed out billions to private corporations to operate charter schools at the expense of our local, traditional, public schools, with no improvement in the overall education of our children. So, in the time leading up to the November election, we will be reaching out to our members, and I hope that we will be able to work collaboratively to defeat Amendment Eight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all that you have said, and we, I personally will speak for myself, I 100% agree. We're asking people to really vote "no" for Amendment Eight in our community. Okay? We're going to move straight through to the next item on our agenda, and that is our consent. So, I need to have a motion and second to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Ingersoll, and second by Ms. Harley. Superintendent Gent, may we have your recommendations?
I rec-
No, we just did the second, and we're just going to do a motion and second to adopt it, and then we'll do the vote later?
No, we have to vote now.
Oh, okay. Well, okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Okay, I see that. All right. At this time now, we ask the superintendent to give a recommendation.
Recommend approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
Board, we have our recommendation. Now, at this time, I'm calling for just a motion and a second.
So moved.
So moved by Debbie Harley, and second by Ms. Hensley. Any board member, do you have a comment on any of our consent items? Okay. Would you like to pull any of the consent items for a separate vote or in discussion? May I please have a vote now on the consent agenda? Okay, Mr. Ingersoll? Okay, aye, everybody? All right, a motion carries five-zero. At this time, we would like to have our superintendent reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning to everyone, and what I want to do first is recognize some employees that have some, that have been moved up into some different positions, some promotions, and we already had approved Michelle Thomas, and I believe she, he got here just in time, and I saw that. Hopefully, that won't, there won't be any problems afterwards. But, anyway, Michelle, come on up, and Michelle's going to be our new Chief Financial Officer. She was approved by the Board two weeks ago, but that was in a work session, and so I wanted to make sure that the public and the community gets an opportunity to see her, and, Michelle, go ahead and give us some nice remarks.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Gent. It is a great honor and appreciation that I accept the position of Chief Financial Officer with St. Lucie Public Schools. I thank all of you for this wonderful opportunity. I began my journey with St. Lucie Public Schools nine years ago as an accountant, working with Tim Bargeron. Over those nine years, and under Tim's direction, I was able to grow personally and professionally. Although Tim is not here today, I would like to thank him for always challenging me to be my best and having confidence in my work. I would like to thank my parents for their guidance and support, as I would not be the person I am today if it were not for them. I would also like to thank my husband, Ken, for all your love and support, especially during baseball season, when my Yankees beat your Red Sox. To my children, Brianna, Lorenzo, and Ariel, your love and support allows me to be the best mom I can be, and none of this is possible without all of that. As I begin this journey as Chief Financial Officer, I know there will be challenges, but I promise to put my best foot forward and represent St. Lucie Public Schools with integrity as I support our students and staff. Thank you.
Got a little fan club there. I'm sure everybody filled out, filled out the appropriate leave forms to sneak away from the annex here. No, just joking, we'll forgive you. That's great that you're here, and we're looking for, Michelle's already done a great job the two weeks she's been on, been on the job, because this is the busiest time of the year for, for her, and we'll hear from her again in two weeks, and we get ready to do the, our TRIM report, and from the staff as well. I'd like to call up now Ms. Tracy Wilkie. Ms. Wilkie is going to be our new Director of Social and Emotional Learning. This is a grant-funded position from the federal government through Title Four, and so with our emphasis on the total child and teaching our total child, and Tracy's done a fantastic job as the principalships where she's been at, and brought on some innovative programs, particularly this year over at Longwood, and so, Tracy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Gent. I am truly honored to take on this capacity to support our, my colleagues at their school sites, and support the mission of our school district to continue our journey in creating environments that are safe and caring for our, for our students. It's really, very passionate topic for me. It's the number-one thing that I've always focused on as a school principal, is to work on the school culture and to make sure that kids feel safe, both physically and emotionally, and with the state of things that are going on in our society, this is so needed, and truly look forward to working with, with Mr. Tomlinson and Student Services in providing that support to our schools. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkie. So, Ms. Wilkie left the vacancy at Longwood Elementary School, and we had done interviews earlier in the summer for some of the openings in our school district, anticipating some other openings in the summer, and so, we, at this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Jennifer Ingersoll, and I'm recommending, well, it's already been approved, so Jennifer, you are officially the new principal at Longwood Elementary School, and no stranger to our school district and to our community, and looking forward to some, some great things. It's great that Tracy don't leave, because I'm sure that Jennifer's going to want to grab you, and you guys talk here probably for the next 24 hours, and, but Jennifer, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Board Members, and Superintendent Gent. Deputy Superintendent Dr. Prince and the Executive Directors, I would like to thank you for the privilege of serving the community, and especially the parents and students of Longwood Elementary School. Throughout the last 12 years, I've had the privilege of working with many amazingly supportive and instructive administrators. I would especially like to thank Patty Heffelfinger, who hired me for my first teaching position, and Marcia Cully, who was my supervising mentor when I was earning my Master's of Education Administration, Carmen Peterson, and Dr. Kevin Perry, who worked as my interim principal my first year as assistant principal, and the most influential is Carrie Wallachevitz, who gave me the opportunity to work for her as an assistant principal for the last three years. Her guidance, coaching, and amazing support has been a gift I will forever be thankful for. I would also like to thank the team at Rivers Edge Elementary for the opportunity to grow my leadership skills there for the last four years, within their Heart of Gold community. Next, I would like to thank my family, my children Seth and Ava, who in elementary school spent countless hours just waiting for me to finish that one last thing, and then as middle and high school students, they supported me volunteering at the schools I've worked at. My mother Gloria, my parents-in-law Dale and Paula, for always supporting my work and cheering on my successes, and lastly, I would like to thank my husband, who for the last 22 years has championed all my goals and always encouraged me to keep aiming high. I look forward to an outstanding school year at Longwood Elementary, and again, I thank you for this opportunity.
Do you want to say anything? Just a couple of other, this will be a kind of a short meeting, so let me stretch it out a little bit here, and I do want to, when we met two weeks ago, we went, I gave you the summary of our projections for our performance, and then we were expecting the state scores to come out a week later, but sometimes, as the state does, they surprised us, and this was a good surprise, they came out the day after our meeting, and so I know that the Board already has the executive summary, but I do want to just share this with the general public, that we had another remarkable year. When we're, we're measured on a, on a, on different cells and a points, and points, and I won't get into the weeds with that right now, but we saw a, a 38-point increase from 626 to 664. If we were to add in lagging indicators, which count next year, which would be our graduation rate and our acceleration points, we would be literally one to two points short of an A-rating. We are 1 and 1/2 percent short of an A-rating right now, so we are right there, as it said in the paper, I didn't say inching forward, it just said we're right there knocking on the door, but it's been a tremendous year for the school district. We have gained on, we are behind Martin County. Martin County had a one-point gain, when you, and when you perform at the level that they're performing on, it's harder to move higher. We continue to outpace Indian River County. They had a 32-point gain, we had a 38-point gain. We're at 664 points, they're at 655 points. So, we, again, in the area of total points, we have a great story to tell there. When we look at some of the largest districts, over 20,000 students, we come in 12th, and we had the second-highest gains for districts over 20,000 students. So, again, a tremendous year. We've, we broke down the projections for you not two weeks ago with the different grade levels. We know we had some, some significant increases in some grades, and we know we had some areas that we have a lot of work still to do, but as an overall school district, we should be very proud of a very, very strong B knocking right on the A-door, but more important to that is what we've done with our students, and our boys and girls in our schools, that continually we're trying to increase at least a year's worth of performance each year, no matter what level you come in at, whether you're at a gifted-advanced level, or whether you're, I'm at a Level One, and you're, and you're, and you're, have major, many challenges in front of you. The main thing is that each child sees a year's worth of growth. Our teachers are to be commended, our employees are to be commended, our administrative staff, all employees, from bus drivers to cafeteria workers, everyone plays a role in this, in the, in the outstanding performance that we have. So, the Board has a great story to tell. We have a great story to tell for our community. We'll be out on the road sharing this information as well, and as a former coach and a great second-guesser, and then in a book by John Maxwell I once read, it said that yesterday ended last night. Well, last year's over, and so we can be happy with the, what we, how we've performed, but the new fiscal year started a couple of weeks ago, and the new academic year really starts in 33 days, when our students come back. I know they're all excited about that. It's 33 days, I'm sure the parents are counting down as well, but we have a new year, unique challenges. We'll talk more about that at our work session in two weeks, to talk about mental health, the school security, and what we're specifically doing in our school centers to adhere to state statute, but more importantly, to keep our, our children safe, and our staff members safe in our school centers. The, any questions regarding that, on our performance from the state? Again, it's a great story to tell. Just a couple of other general announcements. Oh, and the other thing, this doesn't include Palm Point. Palm Point's our school by all, you know, these are, these are our students, we do governance of the school center, but because it's a quasi-charter school with a partnership with FAU, that does not count in our total rankings. If we were to take that in our total rankings, you know, we would be, you know, we're an A-rated school district. And so, not to be too technical, but again, a great story to tell out there, Palm Point had a good year as well, and we really count them, when we do, our scores counted in, but the state doesn't do that. We have two schools that we're going to appeal to grade levels. The score, we have, we believe at St. Lucie Elementary, we're one student to two students away, that there may have been miscalculation, which will increase that grade to the C, and at Oakhamic, we believe that we have a good appeal, appeal for that school as well, to be from, they're right at the cusp of a B to an A. Manatee Elementary, it doesn't look like we can appeal, but in our, our, breaking it down, they were one student shy of an A-rating, and we have other schools that are right on that cusp, and I'll get that information through, through Dr. Prince and the Assessment Department for that. So, you know, grade really doesn't tell the whole story, what's really important is about the culture that's established. For many of our children, our schools are the safest place that they come to during the course of the day. Our teachers do a remarkable job, ask to do more. The first, and you've always told me, heard me say it, the first and best teacher should be the parents. Unfortunately, that's not the case for many of our kids and our boys and girls, and so, again, kudos to our teachers, kudos to all of our staff, our administrators, the folks that are in the room for a fantastic year, and enjoy that accolade, because again, the year, we got a new year started, and we're on the right track, but Mark Twain said you get run over if you don't keep moving, so we want to keep moving in the positive direction, and looking forward to this year, and other information that I'll share with the Board in two weeks. July 13th, this, this Friday, we're having a, another teacher job fair, that'll be at St. Lucie West K8 from 11 to 1, and we're ahead of where we were at this time last year for vacancies, but we still have a few vacancies available, and so folks that are out there that are, have the appropriate credentials, come on in. We, we'll have a back-to-school pep rally August 3rd, that will be out at Met Stadium. Employees and students will be for free. That information Carrie has posted, it went out a couple of weeks ago. Also, on, let's see here, new teacher orientation will be, I believe, on the third, it's the second or the third? Okay, everybody's nodding their heads, I gave two dates. The second, okay.
It's both days.
It's both days, that's what I thought. So, we'll have new teacher orientation, and on the third, I do know that the Chamber comes in as well, and does a kickoff with our teachers, and we appreciate Teresa Aronson at the Chamber, and for what they do, and some of the partners in our business community that come out and give our teachers some well-deserved gifts, and, and discounts, and things like that as well, and our HR department's working very hard on that. We'll do our kickoff with our administrators on the 26th. I'll get that information to you as well, the Board will be invited to that, and that'll be here again in two weeks. Before you know it, we'll be, we'll be kicking off the new year when our administrators report back to school, and let's see if I'm missing anything else on here. The Morningside Elementary, the students went up to, they were the Florida representative for the Energy Achievement, Representatives for Energy Achievement, and so they represented the entire state up in Washington DC, so they had a great trip, and we got them all back safe, and then the other, the other deal that it's still, even though we have a month left before school starts, we have on our webpage academic games, and what we call the Summer Slide, so that students can, can stay actively involved in whatever grade level it is, there's fun activities, families can use them on vacations, but it's, we have them in some of our camps, and some of our different programs in our community, that it's free, it's a free, there's free resources that are there for students at all grade levels to maintain the, I know they don't think much about academics over the summer, but there is what's called the Summer Slide, and so to try to deter that, we have information that's on the webpage, and parents can utilize that as well. That concludes my remarks. Did I stretch it out enough for everybody? Okay, thank you.
Attorney's report.
No item, thank you.
Attorney Harold, and School Board Members report, and I think I'll just go right to Ms. Hensley, and we'll come on down the road. Okay. Sillsen?
Just a reminder, the Chili Cook-Off is this Saturday at the Fenn Center. I believe it's 11 to 6, so it is great fun, even if you don't like chili. The majority, the money goes to the Boys and Girls Club to support a great mission in our community, so stop in at the Chili Cook-Off if you can. Thank you.
Ms. Harley.
Wow. I just want to echo Superintendent Gent's comments. We have had phenomenal success this past school year. I'm not going to let it be last night until a few minutes from now, because I too want to congratulate all of our teachers, our staff members, our students. It is just a huge testament to the work that each of you do every single day in our school centers, in our administration centers, wherever you may be housed, the work you do is integral to the support and the success of our students and our staff, and I just want you all to know how proud we are of you, and we celebrate your successes, and look forward to continued success in the new school year.
Thank you, Ms. Harley. Mr. Ingersoll?
I too want to echo what Ms. Harley says, we're very grateful for the job that everyone does, from our bus liaisons to our customer service people that first welcome people into our school sites, to our teachers, to our support staff, and it couldn't be done without such a great team, particularly with Mr. Gent and his leadership. One time, we were ranked 45th in the state, and we, in the last few years, we've just been increasing, increasing, and like I said in the last workshop, it's just not year to year, but you can see as the cohort has moved on, students are gaining, gaining more and more ground, and they're getting, becoming more proficient, and people ask, well, how do you get a 95% graduation rate? And you can see why, through the curriculum departments, and throughout the whole process of the education system, we're running on all cylinders. We're not there yet, but we are getting there, and I appreciate the opportunity. I see President David Freeland here, and I thank him for coming and, and supporting us, and all the efforts that you've done to, to enhance education in St. Lucie County, and also, I know you weren't here last week, but the words that Mr. Gent echoed to the previous administration, I appreciate you even thinking about that, and working together with our superintendent, and supporting our Board the way you do. Couldn't do it without both groups being together and working, I plan on having that collaboration, that collaboration continuing, so thank you, thank you for your kind words.
Ingersoll, the last three years of growth and gains that we have had here in St. Lucie County has been absolutely incredible, and I too want to thank each and every one, including the parents, because our parents have had to get on board as well, so all of us together as a community have made a tremendous difference, and I am just so thrilled with that, because every single child, as Mr. Superintendent Gent said, every single child is getting the attention they need to ensure that they can have a year of growth. So, we are focusing our attention on academic success with the each child's assessment, not high-stake, you know, testing, but taking each child's assessment and focusing to make sure that child has that success, at least a year's gain. That has been a lot of work, a lot of people have been involved in that, and when we look at our subgroups, what I am really happy about, and the Board as well, is that our subgroups, when we look at our black students, when we look at our Hispanic students, when we look at our white students, when we look at our gifted students, and all of our students, we see gains, and that's important. As Mr. Ingersoll said, we have not gotten where we want to get, and there's always room for improvement, and we're working on that, but I mean, the incredible gains that we've made in the last three years, we want to make sure that we celebrate that, and that the community understands that all of us together have made that difference, and so we say thank you again. It's our lowest group of achievement three years ago, and, and very low on the totem pole was our African-American males, and we have seen a tremendous increase, because people have really focused on each child and have not given up on any of our children, and so I just want to celebrate you, and thank you for your work. I know it's been tremendous, but we've done it all together, and we thank you for it. At this time, we are going to go right into the superintendent's overall performance, and we save that kind of for last. So, I will call for a motion and a second regarding the superintendent's overall performance, please.
Madam Chair, as we are constrained to only satisfactory or unsatisfactory, I will be content with making the motion to give him a satisfactory approval.
Okay. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. Motion given by Ms. Hensley, and second by Ms. Harley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries anonymously five to zero.
You get to work another year.
And we want to see increase next year.
He is not yet used to us, because we don't castigate people in public, and we don't do a whole lot of kudos in public, actually, but I think that knowing what the success we've had, we spent many years trying to put things in place, so that when we got a superintendent, basically, who is on steroids, that we could take that to the highest level, and it puts us on a path to make sure every single child is going to be successful. We belie the conventional wisdom in the state. They have made comments that we can't do what we're doing in St. Lucie County because of our free and reduced lunch. There is a way to do that, and that is continual focus, making sure that you have the right staff, the right leader for that staff, and making sure that your money matches what you say.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. I'm going to open up at this time for any other Board Member that may have any comments regarding our superintendent's overall performance, if you'd like to speak now.
Just to inject a little humor, you would have gotten the satisfactory, even if you hadn't tried to stretch today's meeting out. But the, the real bottom line is, he's providing exceptional leadership for all of us, and it is an honor and a pleasure to work side by side with you every day. Thank you for what you do.
Mr. Gent, I want to thank your wife and your family, because the sacrifice, I used to say, high school principals had the hardest job in the world, because I, I saw what they did with the sports and the music, and it just seems so overwhelming, and then I met Mr. Gent, so I have to say, he has the hardest job. But, I mean, it, here's the, to me, the key of a leader is somebody who surrounds himself with other leaders of high quality, and I do give you the credit for that, because you have surrounded yourself, and in that, it gives the Board, in our position, the ability to do the best that we can do when we're surrounded by people of high integrity, and so personally, it's, it's a wonderful thing for all of us, but, but I do say to your wife and your family, because the sacrifices that you make on the weekends, I mean, you're on call 24/7, and, and I appreciate that personally, because it is a feeling of confidence, especially during the time that we've had these shootings and tragic events. I know that our district is safe because of your leadership, working with our Sheriff's Department, and our, our deputies, and our police officers, and, and that gives me security as a mom, as a parent, as a Board Member, as a community person, so thank you.
Do you want to say something?
Yes, I do. I would say, going around the community at this time of year, people say, what has been one of your worst fears, or something, and, and I would say is, before I would say, you know, we lack capacity, you know, we lost an HR Director- You know, we lost an HR director, and our deputy superintendent would do both roles and this, and Mr. Gent, you have built capacity that has been past what we could even think of, and I say that because Tim's gone, Michelle steps up, our career technical person leaves, next person steps up. You know, HR's running well. Everybody is stepping up, and you've created a great team that has been able to step up and take that position, and it is very noticeable in the community, because when Mark left, people were like, "What are you going to do for CT?" And the next person stepped up. The name can't come to me right away, but Alicia, and she stepped up, and people are grateful for that. So, you know, we're seeing the capacity build, something that we had issues with in the past, and now it's very comforting to know that the success of St. Lucie County just isn't going to happen. It's just not one of those slingshot movements where it goes up and comes back down, but no, you'll consider you to see continued success because of the leadership of the district and the school centers.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Superintendent Gent, as you can see, we've been well pleased with your work and your progress of this district, and I for one am very happy that we chose you as superintendent. You have proven that you care about all students, and we really appreciate what you have done and the work that you have done, and we thank your family, as has already been said, for being so patient as you have helped to build this district up. As I look out there, I see so many strong leadership that you've put in place, and I don't want to call out names, but I see so many of you out there that you have worked so diligently for this community and for our students, so we want to thank you also. But I must call out at least one person, and that's Dr. Prince. Dr. Prince, you have done a tremendous job as well as our deputy superintendent, and we thank you for that. We acknowledge that. And as I look at each of you, I see the same thing, but of what you have done in your departments as well. One of the things I would like to see is stronger growth. I want more balance in the area of minority representation with our teachers and with our administration, and I'm looking forward to seeing more of that. And I would like for us to be able to take the people that we already have within our district, not have to scout, but use what we have right here in this district to bring them up and to train them and to not leave them alone where they can be failure, but I want more opportunity for those of minorities to be where in certain positions, because our children need to see that. They need to see strong leadership across the board, all of our different children within this district. So, like we said, there's growth to be made. Nobody's perfect. We're moving forward, and that's what I want to see, so I appreciate all the work that you have done.
Let me just, I just want to respond that I appreciate the comments from the board, and I listen intently, and it's hard work. I don't have the toughest job in the district. I really don't. I have surrounded myself with a fantastic team, the executive team. Most of them are here right now, and I do appreciate what they do. I don't compliment them very much in public, but they do a fantastic job and the success. The toughest job is really in the school centers. It's our classroom teachers and our administrators. They have their hands full. All of our jobs are challenging, but the challenges that our children bring to us today are like unprecedented of anything we've ever seen in our history of the nation, and what's the jobs that they do every day and how we try to be there. We're here to serve them, and my team is here. It's about servant leadership. We're here to serve them, because they really, all of our levels are difficult, and we have to make tough decisions, and I own every one of them. But it can't be done without a fantastic team. It can't not be done without a supportive, strong school board, and you guys are recognized across the state as a model school board. And it's a team. It's a team of six when we work together. We're not always, you know, we talk in private, we discuss challenges that are in our schools, we discuss challenges in our community, but we work together. You allow me to do my job, and so I appreciate that. But it's really a collaborative effort of everyone to really support teaching and learning and keeping our kids safe in schools. So, having said that, I'm going to take the rest of the week off, if that's okay with everybody. No? Okay.
We'll give you Friday.
Okay, I'll take Friday off. Anyway, again, sincere thank you for this. I appreciate that, and we're ready to roll for the new school year.
Seeing that we have no unscheduled speakers this morning, we will adjourn our meeting and continue to have a wonderful summer. Meeting adjourned.